Ready, Heather? Gus, you have time?
We're good, Mayor. We've got 4:30.
You have four? Good afternoon, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo to establish quorum for this meeting, and as soon as we do that, we can call out the agenda items for the night.
Mayor Armando Ocaña.
Present, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Nori Garza.
Here.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I will call for the order of the meeting at this time and call for Mr. Perez for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If I can have everyone please stand and bow your heads for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, please give our nurses strength to face each day and then their day ahead. Give them courage, give them wisdom with every word they speak, and give them patience as they comfort the sick and weak. Father, please give them assurance as the day slips into night that they have done the best they can and that they have done what is right. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. We'll call for item number one, the proclamation. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor, ma'am.
Mayor and council, as you can see, we have a full house with us right now.
There for a minute, I thought you were in the Mission Event Center. Is it clinic? No one's seen all this individuals here?
And for this, we extend, the mayor and the council would like to extend their gratitude to the nurses from Mission Regional Medical Center, Mission Consolidated Independent School District, Sherland Independent School District, and the Idago County Health Department. And this gratitude is for their service and dedication in helping to administer the COVID-19 vaccines to our community. They have worked tirelessly, they have worked long hours, and I think they've done this, we've had like seven first doses and I think six second doses. So for that, we are most grateful to them for all of their hard work. So we're going to honor them with this proclamation today, which reads as follows. Whereas since 1991, National Nurses Week is celebrated annually from May 5th, also known as National Recognition Day for nurses through May 12th, the birthday of Florence Nyden Gill, the founder of modern nursing. Whereas Nurses National Week is a time of the year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses make to provide safe, high-quality health care. Whereas nurses are known to be patient advocates acting fearlessly to protect lives of those under their care. Whereas nurses are leading in the delivery of quality care in a transformed healthcare system that improves patient outcomes and safety. Whereas nurses are the cornerstone of the public health infrastructure, promoting healthy lifestyles and educating communities on disease prevention and health promotion. Whereas nurses are experienced and trained to recognize and treat life-threatening problems at a moment's notice. Whereas nurses provide urgent treatment in trauma centers, skilled assistance in flights and ground transportation, or personalized care to the critically ill, nurses play a vital role in the healthcare needs of their patients. Whereas nurses are part of the frontline health workers that have exhibited tremendous self-sacrifice in the fight against COVID-19, often risking their own physical and mental health to provide essential care. Whereas nurses have worked shoulder to shoulder with the city of Mission, providing the necessary vaccines to protect our citizens and to prevent the spread of the daily COVID-19 virus. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mission, asking that all residents of this community join us in honoring the nurses who care for all of us and celebrate nursing's accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show appreciation for the nation's nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Proclaimed on this, the 10th day of May, 2021.
I will entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion. There will be no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And I do recognize Mr. Eddie Olivares that's in the back. Mr. Olivares, will you step to the podium, please, and assist us in this endeavor? You have been very instrumental in saving lives for the Idago County.
Mayor.
And I'm honored to have you here.
Mayor, thank you. And councilmen and women, thank you very much. And I have to actually extend my thanks to you, chief, because if it wasn't for you that taught me back when I was a volunteer firefighter here in Mission, the importance of public service, the importance of community, and taught me all those skills that helped me become a leader that I am, I have to thank you and the citizens of Mission because this is where I got my start. And I'm very grateful to you, sir, especially you, sir.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you. But first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that right as I was looking up the most current numbers, for Idago County, as of right now, as we speak, over 409,729 first doses have been done. 306,174,000 people are fully vaccinated with their second dose. Total of 693,137, nearly 700,000 doses combined have been done. But this could not have been done. It was for all the nurses. Please stand, all of you. All the nurses. We are recognizing these nurses, Mr. Carrillo. And we need also, I know it's Nurses Week, but we need to also recognize Mission Fire Department, firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs who supported this whole event. Also with Alton, firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, Sherland School District, nursing staff. Anybody from Sherland School District? Administration from Sherland School District? Mission? Where is she? Oh my God, I'm embarrassed. I didn't know she was here. I walked in. Come on in, please. Really, this is. This is the leadership that makes everything happen. And really, Dr. Ocaña, Mayor, councilmen and women. For over a year, we've been working hard to save lives. Nearly 90,000 people have gotten COVID in Idago County. Nearly 3,000 people died. These ladies and gentlemen are heroes beyond belief.
But we still stand strong together.
Yes, we still stand strong together. But it's just, I'm so proud to be part of a team with wonderful leadership, wonderful support. And really, this acknowledgement, I know you gave me the opportunity to speak, but really, the knowledge of all the leadership here and it's tremendous work. Dr. Ocaña, please, any kind of words you have to pass, please.
We would like to thank our city, Dr. Ocaña, our commissioners, for all the support, Eddie Olivares, the county, and for bringing the vaccine. And most of all, you all that were in the front lines that answered the call. Because let me tell you, when things got really bad, we were like, oh my gosh. And when you all stepped up to the plate and you were in the front lines, we were amazed. It was something miraculous thing that you all said sent me to the front lines. And that, from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. Because of you, we have family members that are alive today and thriving, and we're getting our kids into our schools and continuing this work. And we know that you are tired. We know that it's taken a lot from you. But there's going to come a time when you're going to be able to rest. And just know that we are so, so grateful. And you have saved generations. Remember that. Remember.
I just would like to give my sincere appreciation to, again, the city of Mission, the Idago County as well. The girl you guys always been there guiding us through these efforts. First and foremost, our nurses who have known what it is to have a personal loss among them. And they still go out there and have stepped up and continue to do it. As a matter of fact, this weekend, they were out there continuing to provide vaccines and they're going to continue this week. So for that perseverance, we're here to honor you all. And thank you so much for everything that you do. We appreciate you. And of course, Nurse DeVino, leading them at the, setting that example.
On behalf of all the nurses, not only the ones that are here, but their self that might not be here, you know, on behalf of others, Nathan White, we would like to send you on behalf of the city of Mission and the citizens of Mission, a thankful proclamation for all the services that you do on behalf of the citizens. You all are kind of the silent heroes, you know. But we're giving a shout, the end of the show.
Mayor, sir, welcome to acknowledge. You know, this, we have Mission Hospital, Mission Hospital, raise your hands, please, Mission Hospital staff. Of standing in court, and they did thousands of doses. Let's look at Mission School District, raise your hand. Sherland School District nurses. County nurses that are here, county nurses that are here, 20 people, and they're all just giving vaccines. Other nurses and other support staff in general that help the community with local vaccines, the local. Sir, these men and women are heroes beyond belief. And I'm going to tell you something. Every day, when we would meet, and maybe you heard one of our rah rah sessions, I would tell them, you all are making history. Each and every one of you here are making history. One day, 20 years from now, when there were their grandsons and their granddaughters, and they're going to ask you, what did you do during the great pandemic of 2020? What did you do? Well, you could always say, I sat around and I watched local news and read the newspaper. Or you could stand up and say, Nina, let me tell you what I did. I gave thousands of vaccines every day. I helped thousands of people every day. And I changed the lives of my community, my hometown, every day. And I did it because I care. And I'm proud. And you could say that your ulita or your ulito helped during the pandemic. That's what you did, and I'm proud of you, every one of you. Thank you very much. Mayor, thank you. Thank you.
Comment about history. We'd like to document history. So Mr. Gattia will lead us on how you want to document history in a. Y'all want to step up, up in front of us, who stands, who stands?
Come on, come on.
Those that work together and know each other, if you can get close to each other. Because all of your vaccines.
The thing that needs to be front center, the thing that needs to be front center. You guys, look at the color of the bag, the number of rounds.
The more, the more that you get closer to the, the more that you get closer over here, the more you're going to get the higher ground to get that wide angle.
Sorry about that, sorry about that. Okay, we're doing it. Uh, will we get some people standing here?
Alex.
Alex, Alex.
Adriana was part of that. Adriana, Adriana.
Two, one. We're going to go here, only one. Three, two, one. Dr. Perez, Dr. Perez, come on. Why don't this do? Got one more, got one more, hold on. Everybody, look this way. Over here, three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Mayor, I'd like to let all the nurses know we do have refreshments for them in the community room.
I don't know if you heard our city secretary about that we have refreshments, a small token of appreciation for your service to our community, which we could do more for you. But ending this proclamation, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, y munchos, thank you, okay? Now I'm calling for agenda item number two on presentations, and I will call to the podium, Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega. Jessica Ortega, you have the floor, and you want to bring the team with you? Go ahead and surround yourself with the team that you have formulated.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read the proclamation first, and then I'm going to introduce my guests.
And we'll even let you, recognize you to do the motion also.
Okay, thank you. Whereas this is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental illness affects almost every family member in America. And whereas people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay.
Counsel.
We have enough time, okay?
Whereas people with mental illness make an important contribution to our families and our communities. Whereas millions of adults, children, and disabled are disabled by mental illnesses every year. And whereas only one out of every two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with mental illness. And whereas, good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas, greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. Now therefore, we, the City Council and the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2021, as Mental Health Awareness Month. And call upon all City of Mission citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible service for all people. Proclaim this day, May 10th of May, 2021.
Now can you put it in the form of a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve this proclamation for me.
Your motion has been accepted, and I'm waiting for a second. We have a second, and this is open for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I think Ms. Garza's on board, right, Ms. Garza? And so we can lug it in as a 5-0 vote?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
With this Mental Health Awareness Month, I was on Instagram, and I started following this one agency, and I'd like to bring her up with me. Her name's Laura Mendiola Macias with EM3 Hope Foundation. You could please join me, say a few words.
Thank you, City of Mission, for inviting us, and Councilwoman, you really.
Thank you, uh, City of Mission for inviting us, and Councilwoman, um, we really appreciate it. Uh, EM3 Hope Foundation was founded, uh, three years ago. I lost my 16-year-old son to suicide. And, um, my immediate thought was, when tragedy strikes, you have two options. You either let it hit you, or you stand up and do something about it. And, um, that's what we did, and we founded the EM3 Hope Foundation, and I want to say thank you to all of these volunteers we have. I would say over 30 steady volunteers for the last three years. We have become very active in the West Side, and I'm so glad that now Mission will be joining us this year in our event for May, so we invite the community to come out. It is May 27th, and it is a mental health awareness rally. Again, um, this is a great example, as was the nurses with COVID. You know, when tragedy strikes, you can either let it, you know, hit you, or you can stand up and do something about it. So along with all of our volunteers, we've tried to do our best to fight the stigma of mental health, um, in our community, and, um, we plan to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, and I'd just like to say, I'd like to challenge each and every one of my community members, my constituents, and also each and every one of us, uh, to change city policy and enact by going out for grants and really helping out our citizens and our families, understand mental health, uh, a little bit better, and raise awareness for those families that go through this. Thank you.
Can I have my three-month come up here?
Uh huh.
And, uh, accept this proclamation on behalf of, of all the children that had come into this. I don't need your son. Now can you all come over here so we can get a, a group picture and... You all want a balance picture? Need one more on the other side? Yep. Thank you.
Now I'm going to call for item number three. Ms. Enrique, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So at the chamber, tomorrow, we will be, uh, participated in a ribbon cutting with Capital Energy Solutions. Um, so we're excited for that, and that'll be happening tomorrow. On Friday, we do have a groundbreaking ceremony, uh, for Kano and Sons Trucking. They are doing an expansion. So we look forward to that, uh, milestone, uh, this Friday. And I'm glad to report and let everyone know that our Mission Prosperity Ventures Foundation is back and running, so we have resumed. Uh, so, um, our Board of Directors have already, um, been hitting the road. Um, and now we actually already, um, let everyone know that our scholarships are now available. So we did roll up the scholarship application for the Mission Prosperity Ventures. Uh, the scholarships are available for, uh, students, graduating seniors in the school districts of, uh, Mission CISD and Sheri-Lan ISD. So if they attend a Mission, uh, Mission School, uh, they're, they're, that's part of the criteria for the scholarship. The scholarships range from anywhere from $500 to $2,000. So, um, are the districts have been, um, notified, and the students are submitting their scholarships, uh, applications, and the deadline for the scholarship is May 17th, which is next, uh, next Monday. So i- in case anyone in the community, um, did not know about this, just be sure, uh, to know that a graduating senior, um, criteria, uh, who resides in, in Mission and is going to a, uh, Mission CISD school or Sheri-Lan ISD schools, they qualify for the scholarship, so be sure to submit it. Uh, they can call our office for more questions, and once again, this is an effort for the Mission Prosperity Ventures Foundation, um, that, that is, uh, one of the, uh, 501(c)(3)'s of the Mission Chamber of Commerce. And then moving on, um, it is nomination time. So, um, you, um, our community will be hearing from us. We are now, uh, beginning the process for Board of Directors nominations. Uh, this year, we will be having two available positions. So, um, anyone who is interested in serving on the Board of Directors for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, be on the lookout, nomination period is already, uh, going to start rolling out, and, um, as well as our membership awards. Our membership awards, uh, nomination process will begin, and, um, our members, um, can, um, or anyone from the community nominate Business of the Year Award, Business Leader of the Year, and the Community Impact Award. So, uh, everyone keep your ears and eyes open, and let, and let's, uh, recognize, uh, those, uh, those leaders in our community. And, uh, that is all I have for today. I'm Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Uh, council, any questions for, uh, for the, uh, Mission Greater Chamber of Commerce? No? Ms. Ortega? Ms. Garza?
None. Thank you, Mayor.
No. Thank you, Ms. Enriquez, and I will call for item number four. Look at your departmental reports, and Mr. Perez is here, and our, our department heads are here, in the event that you have any questions uh, on the reports that were, were given to you in writing.
Mayor, I want to approve our report, if you serve.
We have a motion on the floor to, uh, report, to approve the departmental reports that presented in writing, and I have a second. Any final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, 5-0, and item number four, and I'm going to ask for citizen participation. Ms. Carrillo, please, uh, let me know who's in, who's in line.
Uh, yes, Mayor, we had someone sign up, uh, last week, Jesús P.
Is, is he on, uh, on Zoom or...
Uh, he, he was from Franklin, All Animal Rescue.
Okay, is, are you at the, in the audience, Jesús P., you said?
Me, uh huh.
Yeah, Jesús P.? Are you in the audience? Please step to the podium, and you have three minutes. Please just, all I need is your name and your address for the record, and if you're on Zoom, um, Charlie and Alex, let me know. There, he's not on Zoom?
No.
Okay, we already afforded him the opportunity to come into citizen participation, since he signed up, but he's not here. Therefore, I'm going to close the citizen participation, and then Ms. Carrillo has somebody else.
Uh, no, Mayor, we had, um, uh, several people, but it's on the public hearing section of the, uh, of the meeting.
Okay.
So I told them that they could, uh...
Wait until that item, until I call that item. And, uh, Charlie and Alex, electronically, we don't have anybody else that identify themselves for citizen participation. Oh, okay, I'll close the citizen participation, and before I call the public hearing, I want to use my discretionary powers, and I'm going to call up, uh, agenda item number 35, council. If you can turn to agenda item number 35, and Mr. Perez, you have the floor, or, Ms. Bella, Bella is going to be the, the lead on it. Bella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, item number 35 is the acceptance of our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th. This is for the period of October 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2020. We have Representatives Aaron Rios and Chad Young here from CRI CPAs and Advisors, who will present the report. Um, I'll have Mr. Chad come up.
Sir, you recognize that you have the portion.
We have the slides up there, as well as, uh, the reports in front of you. Hopefully, if you want to follow along that way, that's fine as well.
Thank you.
So, uh, looking at page 12 of the report, we, uh, we have audited the accompanying financial statements, the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate, look, aggregate, leave, this, freely presented component units, except for the Mission Redevelopment Authority, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Mission, and, or, as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2020, and the related notes, the financial statements. So what was our audit opinion? So you, the City of Mission received an unmodified or a clean opinion. Uh, we're briefly going to go into an overview of the three biggest funds. Just the General Fund, the Utility Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund. So if you were to flip to page 32, if you're following along on the report, just a summarized version of it. For assets, you have cash and investments of $450,000. For receivables, you have 1.8 million. Uh, due from other funds, other governments, and component units of 15.8 million. A big portion of this is due from the designated fund for monies that are receivable from the CARES Act. Another large portion of this is a sales tax due from the state. Uh, payments have been collected and cleared after year-end for this. Uh, the remaining $94,000 of the assets is made up of prepaid and inventory for a total assets of $18.2 million. Uh, compared to last year, the total assets increased by just under $6 million. Uh, again, a majority of that is due to, or from an increase in the due from other funds. Uh, now looking at liabilities, you have accounts payable of $1.5 million due to other funds and component units of 6.4 million. Uh, the remaining payables of $1.2 million, which are made up of, uh, accrued liabilities, unearned revenues, and other liabilities for a total of $9.2 million. Uh, compared to last year, the total liabilities increased by just over $1 million. The majority of this is in the accounts payable, which is a timing thing, and due to other funds. Additionally, you'll have deferred inflows of $1.1 million. This is related to the unavailable revenue from property taxes, which is comparable to the prior year. For fund balances, you'll have a non-spendable of $115,000, assigned of $2.5 million, unassigned of $5.1 million, for a total of $7.8 million. This is an increase in the prior year of almost $5 million, most of it which is unassigned. So the city has a minimum fund balance policy in place stating that the General Fund shall have unrestricted fund balance of no less than two months of operating expenditures. Just want to let in formula that this goal was met. Uh, so the two months of expenditures was $6.4 million, and the unrestricted net assets at 930, 20 is $7.7 million. Moving on to page 34, the General Fund Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. So looking at revenues, taxes, you have $34.6 million in revenues. Uh, licenses and permits, $730,000. Intergovernmental, just over $1 million. Charges for services, $880,000. Fines, $585,000. And other revenues of $350,000, which is made up of interest and other miscellaneous revenues, for a total of $38.2 million. So revenues increased compared to the prior year by just over $1 million. Uh, the majority of it is actually due to an increase in property tax revenues as the property values increased, as well as there was a slight, uh, increase in the MNO rate last year as well. So looking at expenditures, general government had just under $11 million. Public safety, $17.2 million. Highway and streets, $4 million. Health and welfare, $630,000. Culture and recreation, $5 million. Debt service, $660,000, for a total expenditures of $38.7 million. So expenses decreased by just under $3.3 million compared to last year. Uh, the majority of the decrease within public safety, this, uh, this is related to grants that were received and spent in the prior years that weren't received in the current year. And other financing sources, I have capital leases, $1.6 million, sales of capital assets, $25,000. A transfer in of $6.8 million, and transferred out of $3.2 million. For total other financing sources of $5.3 million. This led to a, a net change in the fund balance in the current year of $4.8 million. So if you want to move to page 37, go over the utility fund. Looking at the statement of net assets, for current assets, you have cash and investments of $7.9 million, receivables of $3 million, due from other funds and the component units, $740,000, and other current assets of $214,000, which again was made up of prepaid and inventories. Uh, total current assets of almost $12 million. For non-current assets, you have capital assets of $90.1 million, and advance of funds, $2.5 million, for total non-current assets of $92.6 million, and total assets of $104 million. So overall, looking at the assets, they decreased by $1.2 million compared to the prior year. However, most of that's related to depreciation of the capital assets. Looking at deferred outflows, this is, uh, related to the loss on refunding and pension and OPEB of $780,000, which is comparable to the prior year. Now moving down to liabilities, the current liabilities, you have subdivider and current customer deposits of $4.5 million due to other funds of $3.2 million. A current portion of long debt, long-term debt is $2.7 million. The remaining current liabilities of $1.3 million includes AP, uh, accrued payroll, compensated absences payable, accrued interest, the canage payable, and other liabilities. You have a total current liabilities of $11.7 million. Looking at the non-current liabilities, you have revenue bond payables of $27.6 million, capital leases of $960,000, net pension and OPEB of $1.4 million, and long-term capital, long-term compensated absences of $210,000, for a total non-current liability of $30.3 million. Uh, overall, liabilities decreased compared to the prior year by $2.3 million. Uh, most of that was actually related to payments made in the current year on your long-term debt, such as bonds and capital lease payments. And additionally, you have deferred inflows, which are related to pension and OPEB of just under $500,000, which is also comparable to the prior year. Uh, net position, you have a total of $62.8 million. And the majority of that is tied up in capital assets and net of related debt, which is $59 million, and infrastructure of $1.6 million. Uh, you also have an amount of $1.2 million that's restricted for debt service. There is an unrestricted amount of $700,000. So overall, we're looking at $127,000 increase from the prior year. Moving on to, uh, page 38, the Utility Fund Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Fund Net Position. So we're looking at operating revenue, which consists of charges for services at $20.3 million. This, uh, decreased just over $100,000 compared to the prior year. And then looking at operating expenses, you have utility administration of $915,000, uh, water distribution of $2.9 million, water treatment of $1.7 million, water waste treatment and collection, $1.6 million, industrial pretreatment of $268,000, utility collection of $542,000, organizational expenses of $579,000, meter readers of $473,000, and expenses related to the Northside Water Treatment Plan of $2.4 million. Additionally, we have depreciation of $5.3 million. So total operating expenses of $16.8 million, which actually was, uh, comparable to the prior year. There were some small increases along the line, but nothing major such as a depreciation, which is kind of be expected. Now, so you had a total operating income of $3.5 million. Now looking at non-operating expenses, there were $660,000, which consist of loss on disposable, disposal of capital assets, interest earned, bond interest and fiscal charges, as well as other non-operating revenue. A total transferred out of $3.6 million, and capital contributions of $960,000, which led to your change in net position of $127,000. So going back to page 37, get on to the Solid Waste Fund. So for assets, looking at current assets, cash and investments of $337,000, and receivables of $1.2 million, with a total current assets of $1.5 million. So non-current assets, which consist of capital assets of $4 million, and the total assets of $5.6 million. So your total assets decreased by just over $2 million. Most of that was due to a decrease in capital assets from appreciation, and additionally, there was a, um, a due from the other funds of $1 million in the prior year that had been paid or received in the current year. So that's not reflected there as well. Uh, deferred outflows, we have a, which consists of pension and OPEB is $145,000. Uh, looking at liabilities, we'll have current liabilities, which include due to other funds of $944,000, and the current portion of long-term debt of $800,000. of eight hundred and nineteen thousand. Other current liabilities total four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which consists of accounts payable, accrued payables, compensated absences, and other liabilities. For a total current liabilities of two point two million dollars. Moving on to the net, the non-current liabilities, you have net pension and OPEB liabilities of five hundred and fifty thousand. Other non-current liabilities of thirty-six thousand, which consist of the long-term portion of the compensated absences and capital lease payable. For a total liabilities of two, two million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. This is a decrease of five hundred and fifty-three thousand. Again, it's mostly related to your current year payments related to debt. Then you also have deferred inflows of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is related to your pension and OPEB. Now looking at net position. I'll have a net investments and capital assets of three point two million. And an unrestricted amount of negative four hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Overall, this is a decrease of one point eight million dollars compared to the prior year, which we're going to discuss on this next slide on the next page. So if we go back to page thirty-eight. And look at operating revenues, which consists of charges for services, seven point five million dollars. Which is an increase of just over a hundred thousand dollars compared to the prior year. And looking at operating expenses. We had depreciation of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And solid waste disposal fees of just under five million. Additionally, I'll have water treatment costs of one point seven million dollars. So total operating expenses was five point six million. Which is a decrease of just over seven hundred thousand dollars compared to the prior year. There were decreases in expenses related to the solid waste disposal as the city shifted to performing the services in-house versus through a third-party service. So you had a total operating income of one point eight million dollars. And when we start looking at the, the non-operating expenses, there's eighteen thousand dollars, which consists of your interest earned and bond interest and fiscal charges. Then after that, there's a transfer out of three point six million dollars. Which created the change in that position of one point eight million dollars for a total net position at the end of the year of two point seven million dollars. That kind of covers the main three funds that we were going to go over. Is there any questions for us today?
I just want a clarification for the public also. On page thirty-seven, both pages. You use the acronym OPEB. And for the purpose of, of the public, what is OPEB?
OPEB. The Chad. The, he's asking what OPEB represents. Chad.
Let him answer it so please, so they can put it on the mic so our citizens will be able to hear.
It's a other post-employment benefits.
Okay. For the purpose of the public, so you know. Any other questions or clarifications?
Out of the seven point eight or six, our fund balance.
What page, what fund?
Five oh one six eight is what is on the time correct. Therefore, we can.
Yes. He's asking for the breakdown of these fund balance.
So actually, if you want to go back into there's a note inside the, that's the financial, it's note twenty. Which is page one oh six, you know, report.
Page one oh six of the report.
It's actually got a breakdown for every fund of what exactly is in there as far as non-spendable, what's assigned, what's the your, your different restricted, unassigned remains. One oh six.
You choose the breakdown.
It's because it's on USB. Yeah.
It's on the full report.
Oh, good.
It means the majority of it is, is our current budget. What we budget for this year, the difference between the revenue and the expense of what we need, what we budgeted, so we do have to. Because we approved the budget in twenty one, and so that difference is not very expensive, we have to put in there at the time.
So it's a carryover?
Said we're going to spend this.
So, so it's carryover to the, to the current, to the new, new budget from last year? Ms. Garza, you have anything, Ms. Garza?
No, mayor, thank you.
No.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All, all saying aye, motion carries, financial report and audit is approved, five oh.
Mayor, I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Sir, your firm through CPA and financial, you do other municipalities throughout the state of Texas?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I just had a question. Can you pull up the slide? I think it was thirty-seven. Where it has like the breakdown or from what I remember. So on there it had like public safety and streets and recreation all broken up into a different number. Do you all find that most cities, I mean, I get public safety is always like the highest. But in okay, thirty-four. In your expertise, working with other municipalities, records of financials, is that common that, because I'm saying the streets, I think it's pretty low. For the budget.
He's, he's talking about the allocations.
Oh, the allocations, yeah, highways and streets. I mean, it, it depends. I mean, it normally is one of the, depends on what projects you have out outstanding and doing, but it's, I would say it's probably average here. I mean, it's, I mean, the public safety is always going to be, public safety, your general government always going to be your two highest ones. The culture and recreation is, is actually, it's, that is a little high, but I'm not sure if y'all got like, did they get a grant or something? Culture and recreation, five, five million. Which kind of sticks out a little bit.
Well, that's pretty good. I like, I like that comment.
Yeah.
That our community will know that we really do.
Yeah.
Culture and recreation.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, that was health and where, I, I miss, I, I miss the health and welfare, no, that, the health and welfare is fine. I thought I was seeing that as culture and recreation. So everything looks, looks, looks normal.
So it's
If, if parks is included in, in that category, then the answer to your grant is, is yes, we, we've gotten a grant for parks.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's comparable to?
Yes, I'd say based on, especially from the cities down here in the valley and very comparable, yes.
Okay, that's just my curiosity. Thank you.
Any other question? Thank you, thank you, and I'm glad that
Thank you. I just want to add that we'll make this available on our website, just for the public to be able.
Great, thank you. Now I'll call for public hearings and I'll call for the public hearing number six. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
She'll be on Zoom, sir.
She'll be on Zoom.
Yes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item number six is a rezoning for a tract of land containing point six one three of one acre, being a part or portion of the golf course and lake reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club Phase One B. This is from PUD AOP, which is Permanent Open Space District to PUD R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Leonel Cantu. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the lower lane and Crystal Intersection along the east side of Crystal Drive. Surrounding zones include PUD Townhouse and Permanent Open Space District. Existing land uses include single-family residential and vacant property. The current future land use map shows this area as a planned unit development. The proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. The R1 would be a better neighbor for this area. Staff is recommending approval. During the planning and zoning meeting, there was some concerns, opposition voiced. Their concerns were in regards to the drainage. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against zoning, please identify. Go ahead, ma'am, you have the podium for, since you're here in person. And then we'll, if anybody's on, on Zoom, I'll, I'll get to you in an app. Ma'am, your address and, and your name and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Karen Prewitt, spelled P-R-E-W-I-T-T. My address is twenty-one zero one Mob Drive. And it's just across from the area here. So I am opposed to the rezoning of this tract of land that's just east of my home. In January two thousand and twenty-one, I sent a letter in opposition due to the numerous issues with the infrastructure at Meadow Creek. I did receive from Mr. Flores, the deputy city manager, a message that stated, and I'm quoting here. "The discussion has begun and preliminary costs are being put together at, at, for the two lift stations in your neighborhood. The desire is for the city to take ownership of the lift stations, and this will take some time. We will be conducting our own engineering study to ensure the project is done correctly. As we move forward in the process, we will keep you informed." That was February fifth. I did not receive any word back. At that time. Now it is asked to be rezoned again, and so I did reach out to Mr. Flores as well as other city officials, and I'm grateful that Ms. Deluna did respond to me and did say that this is more than likely going to be taking until the end of this year. Until December. And so my issue with this would be that we're adding additional housing. Right now, there's already twenty open lots. And if this is approved, that'll be another at least twelve or fifteen, and I'm not sure without an engineering study if, if the infrastructure that was originally put in in nineteen eighty, so it's forty years old, is able to actually take on the additional housing. So that's my biggest concern. Also, this is in the floodplain, and so I do know that that, that's an issue. I do, as well as my neighbors, all have to have flood insurance from FEMA because this is in the, and, and I do appreciate how Councilwoman Nori Gonzalez-Garza did raise the issues about the ownership as well as rezoning permanent open spaces without FEMA approval. And so I do want to appreciate her opposition and her questioning on that. I do appreciate them. So I am opposed. I would be requesting that you would take no action until proper engineering study can be conducted. And the homeowners are aware of the results of that study.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is the public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? Anybody in the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so, so I'm going to move over to the electronics. Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, mayor, we have Oscar Sines.
Mr. Sines, you have the floor, sir. Please identify yourself and give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir, in favor or against.
Thank you. First and foremost, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Oscar Sines Junior. My address is twenty-one oh three Crystal Drive, right next to the open area. So I'm in opposition for the zoning change to R1. And the reasoning why is because first and foremost, it's a floodplain. And with floodplains, when I was talking to the engineering department, we came to an agreement knowing that floodplains, knowing that the dirt itself is made up of sedimentary, sedimentary rock that's able to absorb water as far as rising levels of water from floods, hurricanes, whatever it may be, whatever situation it is, it's very beneficial. And the problematic issue that I have is they, you guys continue forward with it R1 is we see the trend of the houses as far as how much square footage it is. I measured what the old surveying was. It was a twenty-four by ninety-one. And it was two thousand one hundred eighty-four square footage. And we see all the homes that have already been built there since the eighties. It's the same thing. It's less than four thousand square footage. And the city, the zoning department, they already told us, forget about, forget about it being a golf course anymore. It's not going to happen. It's never going to happen. So I do not believe that the city should, should treat it when it comes to making it the square footage as if it's a golf course. The minimum square footage for an R1 is six thousand square feet. So at minimum internally, it has to be a sixty by one hundred. And I guarantee you, once this gets approved and to continue forward, they're going to be far less of being a sixty by one hundred. And that's what I'm afraid of, and that's what my neighbors all afraid of, is being houses tightly congested together where vehicles are out the way, are all in the way of the roads, especially in the curbs, creating more of a hazard, especially when it comes to those flash floods. So I have, I see that as a huge risk itself. And another thing too, when it comes to building houses, because my house is in a flood zone. It's not really benefiting the people who will be future, and are living there in the future. If we're talking about uplifting the home itself, the foundation to two to three feet, you guys are not doing nothing. The engineering department, when it comes to actually evaluate the area, they don't have things to actually look at the elevation compression, the, the meter value. You guys don't have that type of equipment to do that. That's more on the, on the developer itself. And I guarantee you, the builders, construction crews, they're not going to be doing that for the benefit of the potential buyers. Which is going to be problematic when it comes to the foundation of the homes. I bought this home new, and I'm already seeing that as a, as a problematic issue later down the road from ten years from now, if I do decide to sell this home. So you've got to take that into consideration for the future homeowners as well and for us as well when it comes to ensuring that if you guys do decide to make this an R1, we know that it's a six thousand square footage. That is our best chances as well as
After, so I'll give you a courtesy fifteen seconds to summarize.
Yes, as my neighbor has said, I'm in opposition of this. I need more further analysis and review of the situation and not just continuing forward for benefiting just one person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else for this public hearing rezoning in favor or against the rezoning? Sir, if you're talking to us, we're not hearing you. If you need to unmute yourself, sir. You muted yourself next, I don't believe. Okay. So we don't have anybody else? The person that, if you want to talk, you need to unmute yourself so we can make communication. Go ahead. Nothing else here. Oh, that was just Anybody in favor or against this public hearing rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? Anybody in favor against this rezoning? If we don't have anybody electronic, and Alex, we don't have anybody electronics, I'm going to close this public hearing. And I'm going to ask for direction from the council. Ms. Garza, are you, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have any direction for the council?
I, I, I have a comment, ma'am, mayor. I do have an issue with, with the permanent zoning being considered before any major study or, or study, you know, is done. So I would like to, if at all possible, take no action and, and have, you know, maybe even we need to have a workshop in reference to zoning property that's in a permanent.
Do you want to convert your comments to a motion, ma'am?
I would like to ask a question to the engineer.
Go ahead.
Mr. Terraza, can you come forward?
Mr. Terraza, please come to the podium and identify yourself with a name and address for the record. And, and your position.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. JP Terraza, city engineer for the city of Mission.
I have two questions. I have two questions for you, Mr. Terraza. This area by Crystal Drive have numbers, the neighbors have said that it's in a flooding area. Have we done a study? Do we know if that is true or not from the property owners, or?
Yes, ma'am. So this whole area is in the flood zone. So if someone wants to develop the area, they need to prove to us and also approve through FEMA to get this area out of the flood zone, and by doing that, they need to fill out several forms. They have to do a lot of engineering, and also they have to get everything out of the flood zone, either by LOMAR or FLOMR, and do feasibility studies.
Please also, Mr. Terraza, please also identify yourself as you are the flood manager of the City of Mission.
Yes, ma'am. I'm the floodplain manager for the City of Mission. I'm the city engineer. My department reviews all the drainage reports.
Thank you.
And also, by when a developer or a consultant or an engineer submits anything through FEMA, it goes through my office, and it needs my signature acknowledging the community form.
So have these, the property owners of this land, have they been told that they need to go through that process? Because it's at their expense, right? Or they have to do the paperwork?
I have not made any contact with them. Nobody has contacted us in regards to the process. I know that at the last council meeting, we had the developer reach out to us. They did a lot of homework. They did a lot of feasibility studies before even it is required. Because when you bring an item as a rezon to the council, the City of Mission does not require for you to do any of the feasibility studies. But they were proactive, and they did all the legwork before they even rezoned it. In this case, no one has approached to us, or no one has given us any any details of what they're planning to do.
Other than the application for rezoning.
Correct.
Okay. I guess my second question would be a homeowner right there next to that, right now it's just for the rezoning, and then they'd have to come back and bring plans as far as the sizing of what's the size of the home. But usually, they have to be built the same size as what's already there. Or could they do smaller? What is the requirement of the city?
Yes, ma'am. There is a requirement. First is the rezoning. Second is they would bring a set of plans to plan and zoning through the subdivision process, and they will need to comply with the ordinances. Either this one is a R1, which is minimum six thousand square feet, if that is mistaken. So they need to comply with all ordinances and with all of our...
And keep in mind also, this is less than one acre of land, which means that they may use that as a one lot, but if they use multiple lot, then Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, they have something like that.
So, Ms. Deluna, you're...
Yes, ma'am.
The owners of this land have not asked you, because I recall two meetings ago, we just approved something, but you're saying that those land developers went through the appropriate channels to get all the questions that we had and the paperwork and all that stuff.
They went beyond.
They went beyond. So can we get with these to make sure that... Because I'm with what Ms. Garza is saying to go ahead and table it, since they're not ready for...
Sure, definitely. We can get together with Mr. Leonel Cantu to see what his game plan, and to show us some renderings, to show us some feasibility studies, and sure, that's not a problem. We can...
Thank you, Mr. Terraza.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else have a question? What is the direction of the council?
Move to table, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The item will be tabled five oh for the record. And I'm calling for the public hearing for item number seven. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Item number seven is a rezoning for a tract of land containing point six one two of one acre, being a part or portion of the golf course and lake reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club Place One B. This is from PUD. AOP Permanent Open Space District to PUD R1. Single-family residential. The applicant is Leonel Cantu. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This property is located near the Diane Circle and Crystal Drive intersection along the east side of Meadowway Drive. During the PNZ meeting, there was opposition. The concerns were in regards to the storm sewer infrastructure, lift station replacement, pop holes, increased traffic, noise, safety secluded area. And this surrounding land uses in that area are townhouses and permanent open space, and existing land uses are single-family residential and vacant property. Staff is recommending approval, so is PNZ. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Ma'am, you have the right to come back. Again, identify yourself, name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Pruitt, twenty-one oh one Mob Drive. And this, if they would bring up the land...
The land, ma'am?
Yes, the actual geographic one. You would see that this area is actually where the lift station is located. So she doesn't have the... And this is the, yes. So the lift station is located behind the houses to the north there. And the only access the city has to get to that lift station and actually work on it is through this land. So if you do move to, or approve to rezon this as R1, you will actually be locking yourself out of the being able to maintain the lift station. And so that is why I think that the engineering study is needed. I mean, if you're planning on completely going away from this lift station and going somewhere else, then you know, I guess that is doable. But I do wanna, I know that Councilman Plata said last council meeting about how the applicants did their due diligence. And I do feel as though this applicant has not taken the due diligence to talk to the neighborhood to let us know what he has planned. And I just feel as though that at the planning and zoning meetings, a lot of times it's said, "Well, it's just a rezoning." But this is the only time I have to say. Once it is rezoned, then it's never up for public opinion. So that's why I am against the rezoning, because this is the only time I have to say. Thank you.
Ma'am, there's always a section and citizen participation in every agenda item also that you can sign up in case you have anything else to say.
Okay, thank you.
You do have a voice. Any other, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Anybody, anybody in favor or against this rezoning from, that is present here, please come to the podium and please identify yourself, name and address for the record. I don't see anybody approaching the podium, so I'm gonna go to electronics. Ms. Carrillo, you got somebody?
Yes, ma'am. We have Christina Shin, Roldan.
It's a shame that you have the floor, ma'am. You have three minutes. Please name and address just for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Roldan Shin, and I live at twenty-one oh one Crystal Drive, and we are right across from this area. And we did have to, this is the second time that we're revisiting this. We, you know, we had been told before that this was settled a long time ago, and I am concurring with the other residents that are in the area. That whole area floods completely. This last hurricane that came in, for the first time in the twenty years that I've lived here, I was actually concerned that the water was gonna reach my house, and I live across the street. So, you know, I've given the fact that obviously the golf course is no longer a, you know, something that's gonna ever come back, which is unfortunate, because this was the prime reason that I moved here and built my home here to begin with. I'm opposed to this because the number of houses that are going up seem to be just being put, you're gonna cut this up into small little lots, and you're gonna put up these small little houses that's gonna add to a bunch of overcrowding, which is already with the houses that have gone around. We've got plenty of open lots that are for sale that people could buy without having to open up this area, and at least leave some area for, you know, green area, so that it looks kind of nice, and not just overpopulated with small houses and create a bigger problem. And I think, I do agree with the other residents. We do need to have further studies regarding, you know, how they're gonna plan to fix this, and, you know, let us know that they're gonna make something that's gonna be viable. We have this worry about flooding. They need to come out here and do the right thing, and so that way, at least, you know, hopefully, I would leave that, I would, you know, say they leave it open, but if they do decide to build houses there, well, then, you know, we're not gonna be worried about huge problems with flooding, because the water came all the way up to the end of the street, and that was the first time. So I just wanna voice my opposition. You know, I'm very sad that this golf course did not turn out the way it was supposed to be. We've not had any clarification as to who, you know, it's very hush-hush. No one seems to ever want to say what's going on, and then they just let it go. So, you know, I'm opposing to that. I hope that they, you know, you and the council will take those that are in power to make those decisions, will at least say, "Hey, let's leave some green area open," and, you know, utilize the open lots that are for for availability for building houses, and instead of turning this into an overcrowded area where it's just gonna be unsafe for people, the cars in the streets are already parked all over, and traffic is just gonna be more than this area can handle.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? Do we have anybody else?
Yes, ma'am. We have Oscar Sines.
Mr. Sines, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Oscar Sines. Address twenty-one oh three Crystal Drive. And I wanna give a good example of the situation that is happening, that has already happened. If we look on Riverbend, we see that the lots have opened up, the zoning has changed, and it came within months, a dramatic just increase of houses being built on top of houses. And just as Christina Shin has said, they decided to just cut them up in little zones, little R1s, houses, and it looks super congested. When we moved to this area, we lived here in Meadow Creek Valley about a year and a half ago, and it was open area, and now you look at it now, it just looks like a congested area with small houses. And that's exactly what's gonna happen with these two areas on Crystal Drive, which we do not want. We all, with good faith, expected this to be an open area, agriculture area, just due to the golf course and the open scenery. And the benefiting of just one person itself, who just wants more money in his pockets, he's just decided, "Hey, let me get more revenue by slicing these lots smaller and smaller, make more houses, sell these lots, sell these houses for a hundred and forty thousand, and let me become a more rich person." It doesn't work that way. You don't come to the neighborhood, you don't ask us, you don't knock on my door, ask me what I think. He doesn't even take the time to even take care of his open area lots, either way. We receive the letters to pick up our trash, don't put them in front of our yards, when in reality, it's people like him, people that don't care about the neighborhood. We care about our neighborhood. Come to us, speak to us, we're here, knocking on doors. Why are you just gonna go ahead and continue forward just for one person? Speak to us. That's all I ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? Do we have anybody else electronic?
I don't see anybody else.
Nobody else? Turning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I'm closing this public hearing, and I'm asking for guidance from the council. Council, you have the floor. Yes, Mr. Terraza, please give us a, what is the average lots right now in existence, admittedly? Regular home lots?
Back then, they used to have an HOA, and they used to have their own ordinances or their own bylaws, if you will. I believe the HOA was dissolved back in the eighties, if that is mistaken. But that's also one of the problems with the lift stations. Those lift stations stay private, which they were supposed to be maintaining, but the City of Mission has been maintaining them ever since. And that's our proposal, our future proposal is to relocate those lift stations, get them out of the residential area.
The question...
As far as the lot size, to be honest with you, I don't know, ma'am. I don't know what is the
You don't know? Okay.
The size right now on those...
You can get back to Mr. Plata.
Sure. I'll get back to you on the size.
You're okay.
I don't know if we have them recorded in planning on the...
That's fine, Mr. Terraza. We'll get back to you. When Alex moves back to his office tomorrow, he'll get us the information. Yeah. I know, I know, it fluctuates, you know? But if we can, we can look at minimum standards, the minimum size, you know, which is the smallest ones that are there. I know, I know. I think that would be, because I know some of them are one-acre lots. In some areas, they're one acres.
Mayor, based on the, you know, that we had the same scenario, I didn't have either numbers, but I think that council long, just to say they need to do their studying. Their board, they're bringing to a public life table.
And talk to the papers. You are recognized in the motion to table the rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven is tabled at five oh. And this is a public hearing for item number eight. And anybody in favor or against this rezoning? But before we open it for the public, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor, ma'am.
Item number eight is another rezoning for a tract of land containing point five five one of one acre, being a part or portion of the golf course and lake reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club Place One B. This is from PUD Agricultural Permanent Space to PUD R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Leonel Cantu. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the Tahoe Drive and Meadowway Drive intersection along the west side of Meadowway Drive. The surrounding zones in that area are permanent open space and single-family residential. Existing land uses include single-family and vacant property. The proposed zone does comply with a future land use map and surrounding land zones. The R1 would be a better neighbor for this area. PNZ and staff recommended approval. During the PNZ, there was public opposition, and the concerns voiced were in regards to storm sewer infrastructure, the lift station replacement, increased traffic, noise, safety. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Please come forward, ma'am, to the podium.
Again, Karen Pruitt. I don't have any new information on this, but I do just wanna make sure that you understand same issues, and I am opposed to this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Terraza. Anybody in favor or against this request that is here in person, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronics. Do we have anybody in electronics?
Oh, ma'am, we've got Oscar Sines.
Mr. Sines, you have the floor, sir. You know the rule.
Oscar Sines, twenty-one oh three Crystal Drive, and I'm in opposite, opposition of going forward with this for the same reasons that I have spoken previously. And I just want to note that the neighborhood is here. Neighbors from the Meadow Creek Valley, homeowners, were here speaking in opposition. I just only, only wish that Mr. Leonel Cantu was here to speak to us, especially in this hearing, on why he believes that there should be a zone change. So, I mean, to me personally, that speaks highly of what kind of person that he is in regards to him and his personal gains. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody electronic?
Ma'am, we have Christina Shin.
Ms. Shin, you have the floor, ma'am.
Again, Christina, and I'm at twenty-one oh one Crystal Drive, and I concur with Oscar and the other residents that are here to show my opposition once again, and I do believe that we may not have a homeowners association, but I was under the understanding that we do have covenants that should be, can still be upheld regardless of whether they... that should be, can still be upheld regardless of whether there is a homeowners association or not. I'm not sure of it, but I, I, once at one time when we were opposing this a few years ago before, that, um, the covenants were upheld because of that. Um, and I do, you know, I also think that, that the owner of this property that wants to switch it over should be here and tell us exactly what his intentions are. Because I'm telling you, the houses that are going up are way smaller than my house. My house is a, you know, twenty eight hundred square house foot. Uh, you know, that it's two story house. I don't need my property values going down because they're putting houses here with, that don't meet any requirements. There's no garage. There's, you know, no place for them to park their car because they're making a house without a garage. Now they're all parking on the street. So, you know, I, I just wanted to show and say that I'm opposed to, you know, making this an overcrowded neighborhood. And, uh, at least, you know, fill up the lots that are available for housing without trying to turn every single bare spot into a housing area. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Is there anybody in electronics? We don't see anybody, Alex? Well, thank you. Uh, I'm closing this public hearing and I'm going to ask for direction from the council.
Ma'am, I move to table.
We have a motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Item number eight is tabled. And I'll call for item number nine. This is a public hearing, but Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
And I'm abstaining in this one, number nine.
Okay, item number nine is a rezoning for lots six, seven, eight, and nine out of block three Meadow Creek Country Club Phase Two A. This is from PUD R1 T Townhouse Residential to PUD R3 multifamily residential. The applicant is Lionel Cantu. And the council is inclined, uh, to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This property is located approximately a quarter mile north of JC Parkway and Lakeview Drive along the west side of Lakeview Drive. Surrounding zones include high density manufactured housing and a common area. Existing land uses include single family residential and mobile homes. This, uh, proposed zone does not comply with a future land use map. Staff feels that an R3 multifamily residential district would be detrimental to this area that has been long for single family residential and mobile homes. The R1 would be a better neighbor for this area. Staff is recommending denial of the PUD R3, but is receptive to approving an R1. They did submit an opposition, uh, I mean, a petition with fifty five percent in opposition. If the council is inclined to approve this item, a four fifth vote would need to be, uh, would be needed to approve this item. There was opposition during the PNZ as well, and the concerns voiced were regarding storm sewer infrastructure, lift station replacement, increased traffic, safety, noise. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Please, uh, if you want to state a statement, please come up to the podium at this time. I don't see anybody coming up to the podium at this time. So I'm going to ask for electronics.
We have Oscar Science.
Mr. Science, you have the floor, sir.
Hello, Oscar Science, 2103 Crystal Drive. And I'm in opposition of this due to the fact that a multifamily home uh, is going to decrease the value of the surrounding area dramatically. And like, I, I understand that it's probably the same person as well. Um, we know that there have been multifamily homes, apartment complexes, townhouses being built to that neighborhood. But we see that, that is a, as a, as a major failure on the developer's part. We know that looking at these apartment complexes, all it does is devalue the neighborhood. Uh, not well taken care of. A lot of vehicles around the, around the neighborhood parked on the side. Um, so I'm in opposition to this.
Thank you, Mr. Science. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Anybody in electronics?
Christina Shin.
Ms. Shin, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, again, my name's Christina. I'm at 2101 Crystal Drive. And I would like to voice my opposition as well for the same reasons that Mr. Science is stating. Um, you know, single family homes are okay, but I already see a lot of houses here where there's more than one family living in there. And, uh, you know, they're, if you start building multifamily homes like this, it's definitely going to add to the crowding and, and it's just going to bring the value down for everybody that's already there. So I just wanted to voice my opposition as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Is there anybody else in the club? You don't see anybody? Anybody? I'm closing this public hearing and asking for guidance from the council. Counsel, you have the floor.
So the initial request was for multifamily residential and planning.
Yes, but they already have an R1T zoning. You have a motion on the floor to table. Do I hear a second?
I have a couple of questions for Susie, mayor.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor at this time, ma'am. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second in this opening for discussion. Mr. Terraz, you have the floor, ma'am.
Ms. Deluna, this is a totally different, um, land developer than the other three, right?
No, it's the same developer. It's the same developer for all the four tracks.
Okay, and so.
But the conditions are different. I think that's what you're saying.
The request is different. The request is from townhouse. It's currently townhouse and they want apartments, which is R3. So we're against the apartments, but we are considering the R1, which is single family residential, which was in the area.
So they're pretty close to other townhouses.
Uh, no, single family residential, they're homes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? There, there's no other discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion for item number nine to be tabled is a four oh vote. Mr. Betolela has, uh, has, uh, indicated, uh,
Yeah, abstaining.
Worked together with the city manager on the paperwork on them. So it's a four oh vote with one abstain. Can you comment through the, the general? Alex, then it's for.
I was just wondering how come this one did not go to the department first before coming to, uh, that way the other one.
The other one's being greeted.
Yeah, why didn't, uh, this, uh, land developer work with us like the one before?
I don't know. It's up, it's up to them since it's not a, I guess, a requirement when you rezone and, I mean, it's to your best interest as a, as a developer, but the city of Mission doesn't force the developer to come and do this feasibility study before you rezone it. So I guess it's up to them.
This is a very special area that is in a flood zone with everything that we had seen in the last couple of years. Are we not even recommend to add something like that? I mean, I, I see recommendation by the staff on all four items. Based on what, as you mentioned, those are.
What's a different department? It's not even his, it's not his.
Susie, would you address that, uh, that question that Mr. Ploton has?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the question?
Based on what are the staff including our city manager recommending that we approve? I feel like there's always a problem for the citizen in pause.
Ms. Deluna, I think, um, that is very imperative that as your department, uh, grows and people are going to come in, especially in this area that we work with our engineering department, with Mr. Terraz on this, to make sure that the land developers and engineers that want to come develop in Mission, especially that area, that we have those communications before we get here.
And then unnecessary paperwork.
And we do have those communications, but I think, uh, the question is that, uh, when a developer comes for a rezone, that how come we don't stop it at the planning stage? That's what you're asking, Mr. Terraz?
Yes.
We as a staff, we don't have the rights.
So, so if I may, if I may, sir, um.
Mr. Terraz, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. So, uh, any and all applicants that do come in, we give them due process. And this is part of the due process. And so we do take into consideration planning and zoning recommendation as far as staff. Uh, we look at the surrounding areas as well. And that therefore, that, that's the reason why, um, you know, planning and zoning and staff, um, combining jointly recommend for residential, considering that there is residential, uh, surrounding this area. Now, as far as this particular item that is a multifamily, uh, therefore, that's why, um, staff recommended denial because it's not, it, it's not part of the area or the adjacent area, um, as far as it being residential. So that's, that's what we take into consideration as far as the, the items as well. Um, like JP mentioned, each developer is different, but that's something that we will recommend moving forward uh, with our planning department to go ahead and check with staff and do their due diligence prior to us, uh, give them the opportunity of the due process coming to the council.
And also sometimes, like that, uh, in, in all defense to the staff, they also offer what is called a, a pre-beating also before they even start the whole process. Before they even filed the application, they offer the, the pre, pre-review of their plans before that. I've seen that done by planning and zoning and I applaud you all for that because before they have come before the application, they already know what to expect. You, go ahead, Mr. Terraz.
Yeah, I mean, there's something like this that is important for us to notify that developer, I mean, and also so we can give a piece of mind to the citizens. And letting them knowing that then what is it that we want? Nobody, especially once again, with all the flooding that we had, we had to go up above and beyond to make sure that we give a piece of mind to the citizens before the neighbors start.
And like you mentioned, we do meet, uh, every Thursday. It's our subdivision review committees where all of our, all of, several departments gets together, which is probably work, city engineer, uh, plan and zoning, the fire marshal. And we do give recommendations to all these developers and consultants, but it's up to them to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Terraz. I, I will stop the conversation.
Thank you.
And I will call for a public hearing, item number ten. And Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number ten is a rezoning for a point eighty three acre tract of land informing a part of portion of Lot Three Oh Four Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is from R1T Townhouse Residential to C3 General Business. The applicant is Mar Designs and Construction Inn. If the council is inclined to approve this option, this, um, rezoning and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This property is located on the northwest corner of Dorado Drive and North Sherry Road. The surrounding zones include R1T Townhouse Residential and R1 Single Family Residential. Existing land use include a single family residential on the south side commercial and the west would be vacant. This property, the future land use map shows this area as lower density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land zones. Based on the longstanding existing land uses, staff is recommending denial of the C3. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Anybody in the audience in favor or against this rezoning? I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time. So I'm going to call for the electronics. There any, uh, buddy electronics in this? Alex, no. I will close this public hearing and give guidance to the, the council.
Mayor, I move to deny is recommended by PNZ.
Okay, for clarification before I take your motion, ma'am. Uh, if you, if you, I want you all to make it, I want to make clear for the council. The PNZ and staff recommended denial. Do you want to deny the denial or do you want to, uh, concur with the denial for clarification for the motion?
I'm, I'm concurring with a denial.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and item number ten is, is denied. And I'm calling for public hearing number eleven. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number eleven is a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for KO Bit Sky Social Club located at six oh, six oh eight North Sherry Road, units eleven through thirteen. Uh, this is Lot One Alba subdivision. The applicant is KO Bit Sky Social Club LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this, um, item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of E Six Street and Sherry Road. The applicant leased three suites for a social club with a bar where members pay monthly fee or hourly fee to play poker with friends. They pay, play poker and the owner don't rake tables. The applicant has been running a similar business in the city of McAllen for the past three years successfully. And now would like to expand to the city of Mission. Days and hours of operation would be every day from four PM to two AM. He's proposing eight employees for his, uh, staff. Parking is held in common. Section one fifty six dash three of the zoning code states that bars must be three hundred feet from the nearest residence, church, school, or publicly owned property. There is a residential subdivision within three hundred feet. However, PNZ and council have waived the separation requirement in previous CUP. Staff and PNZ recommended approval subject to a one year reevaluation to assess the operation, waive the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential homes, compliance with building fire sign codes and the acquisition of a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor of this conditional use permit? Anybody in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. Sir, approach the podium, identify yourself with your name and your address and what position you're taking in favor or against.
Thank you, mayor and, uh, council members. My name's Almond Reyes. Um, my address is seven zero three Sycamore Avenue. I live right behind, uh, where this is proposed. Um, so I'm opposed granting this permit, uh, to consume alcohol on the premises. Um, the reason being, the reasons being is that, um, that street where that's going to be is right at the exit of our neighborhood. Um, so I live in Sherry Crossing there. I mean, it's literally, you can look outside my back window and you can see about a hundred feet. It's right there where the parking lot's going to be. So I've been there, living there sixteen years. Um, bars closed at two AM, just like it was stated. Uh, I've got two small children. They're two and four. I've seen other kids in the neighborhood. Um, my concerns are increased noise at late hours of night and morning. People exiting there who might be, uh, intoxicated or at least buzzing. Uh, there's traffic of people possibly under the influence of alcohol. Um, there's increased risk of violence and crime and, and even shootings we've seen like on the neighborhood, uh, in the neighborhood of wherever, um, alcohol is consumed on these bars. Um, and that I'm just worried about, um, possible decreasing the value property of, of my house. Uh, so I would ask that this permit is not granted. Um, and I know that y'all would consider it just because you would want the same for yourself, your families and your children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. This is a, uh, public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching this podium at, at this time. Therefore, I'm going to ask for electronics. Is there anybody in electronics that wants to participate in this public hearing or against this conditional use permit? No? Alex, no? I will close this public hearing and I'm going to ask, uh.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion to deny in a second. In this opening for discussion, any discussion? Scott, so you have. Scott, so you have anything?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries and for clarification, you are denying both orders. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For the record. I'm calling for item number twelve. Item number twelve, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twelve is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window. This is for Twisted Sisters at fifteen hundred West Business eighty-three, suite one. This is Lot A Mission Acres. It is currently zone C Three Commercial. The applicant is Anna Garza. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Los Ebanos and Business Highway eighty-three. The applicant is leasing a four hundred and fifty-eight square foot suite for a coffee shop with a drive-through service window. The applicant proposes to have three tables with four chairs each. Access to the site is from two driveway cuts along Los Ebanos and from Business eighty-three. The drive-through service window is along the east side of the building allowing for stacking for approximately two vehicles. Hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday from six thirty AM to eight PM. For staff, they're proposing two to four landscaping and parking is held in common. They have a total of twenty-five parking spaces. P and Z and staff are recommending approval subject to a one-year reevaluation to assess the new operation, compliance with building, landscaping, fire sign and health codes, and the acquisition of a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against conditional use permit? Anybody in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for, is there anybody in electronics in favor or against this conditional use permit? No?
No.
I'm going to close this public hearing and ask direction from the council. Council, you have the floor.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. In this opening for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance fifty twenty, am I correct? Is approved five oh. And I'm calling for item number thirteen in the public hearing. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
I'm sorry. Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit for the selling onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for La Casa de Pancha located at four oh one East Griffin Parkway, Suite C. This would be Lot One Block One North Conway Number One subdivision. It's currently zone neighborhood commercial and the applicant is Juan Eddie Pintor Campos. If the council is, is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of East Griffin Parkway and Obleed Street. The restaurant has been in operations since September of twenty twenty. The applicant is now interested in offering alcoholic beverages when there are food orders. There are no churches, hospitals, or private schools within three hundred feet, thus complying with section six four. The hours of operation would be Monday to Thursday from eight to ten, Friday and Saturday from eight to two, and Sundays from eight to twelve. He has six employees as a staff. They are a total of sixteen parking spaces that are held in common for this commercial plaza. There, he has some tables outside that will only be placed after the other businesses are closed. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and CUP. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics on the public hearing. Do you have anybody in electronics for this item? There is nobody, so therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council. Council, you, what is your wish?
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve ordinance fifty twenty-one and fifty twenty-two. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, so ordinance fifty twenty-one and fifty twenty-two are approved at five oh. I am moving to consent agenda items. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting, under the provision of the Open Meetings Act. Consent agenda item fourteen, consent agenda item fifteen, consent agenda item sixteen with resolution number seventeen thirty, consent agenda item seventeen with resolution number seventeen thirty-one, consent agenda item eighteen, and consent agenda item nineteen with, with ordinance number fifty twenty-three. And consent agenda item twenty. Council, do you wish to approve any of them at this time?
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve all items, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I hear a second? Do you have a second? This is opening for final ten for any of the council members to pull out any consent agenda items. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries consent agenda item fourteen, fifteen, sixteen with resolution seventeen thirty, seventeen with resolution seventeen thirty-one, eighteen and nineteen with ordinance fifty twenty-three. And item twenty were approved five oh with a five oh vote. And I'm moving for approvals and authorization at this time. And I'm calling for item number twenty-one. And Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-one is a homestead exemption variance. This is for thirteen point ninety-nine acre tract of land out of the south, six hundred and sixty feet of irregular tract of land of the south, three hundred and fifty point sixty-seven feet and the east, seven hundred and forty-eight of Lot twenty-eight dash ten West Addition to Sherland. This is currently zone agricultural. The applicant is Cristel and Pablo Escobar. This tract is located six hundred and sixty feet south of East Mall Two Road, along the west side of Bryan Road. The lot exceeds the square footage requirements for an R one lot. The applicant decides to construct their single family residence. The city council approved the homestead exemption variance on November tenth, twenty fourteen, which allows the applicant to, to approve or to be able to build their single family residence only if they're proposing their single family residence. The water and sewer and street will be in compliance with city requirements. Staff is recommending approval subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirement. This item is now before you. This is not a public hearing item.
Thank you, ma'am. Direction from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item twenty-one is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number twenty-two. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-two is a homestead exemption variance for a three-point, for a point three zero six acre tract of land out of the south, one hundred and seventy-eight point seven feet of the east, seventy-four point seventy-seven feet out of Lot twenty-three dash four West Addition to Sherland. This is, property zone is agricultural, open permanent. The applicant is Ricardo Cantú Junior. This tract is located four hundred and seventeen point four feet west of Holland Road, along the south side of West Twentieth Street. The lot exceeds the square footage requirement for an R one lot. The applicant decides to construct his single family residence. City council approved a homestead exemption variance, which allows the homesteads to be granted various waivers to the city subdivision requirements, only if they're proposing their single family residence. Water, sewer, and utilities will be in compliance with city requirements. Staff is recommending approval subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirement. This is not a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Looking for direction from the council on item number twenty-two.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. This is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-two is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number twenty-three. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-three is a homestead exemption variance. This is for a six point zero three acres more or less out of Lot Fifteen dash Three West Addition to Sherland. This is currently zone agricultural. The applicant is Victor Boca Negra. This tract is located one hundred and twenty-two feet south of West I Street, along the east side of South Los Ebanos Road. The lot exceeds the square footage requirements for an R one. The applicant decides to construct his family residence. The city council passed a homestead exemption variance, which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers to the city subdivision requirements, only if they're proposing their single family residence. The applicant will be in compliance with water, city, and street and storm drainage requirements. Staff is recommending approval subject to compliance with all homestead exemption requirements. This is not a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Looking for direction from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for discussion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am. You have the floor.
Mr. Deluna, what is the developer plan to build there?
A home. His home. Just one house.
We're approving the homestead exemption variance.
If at any point in the future he would want to construct something else, then he would need to subdivide the property for any future development. But for now, it's just a single family residential home.
Mayor, I have a question as well.
Let me see if Ms. Ortega has, is satisfied with her response. Ms. Ortega?
That's fine.
That's fine. Okay. Ms. Scott, so you have the floor, ma'am.
On, on these homestead exemptions, do, do we, do we ask for a rezoning on these?
It's not a requirement, Ms. Garcia. We can if the council is inclined to, but it, it is not a requirement in order to, to apply for a homestead exemption variance.
Okay. The, the reason being is I, I, I would like to have these rezones so that when we do see our, our zoning map, it reflects what's on the ground.
Certainly ask him to rezone the property, which it would be an approval because the surrounding areas is our single family residential. So he would be in compliance.
Right. That's all, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Any other question?
No, ma'am.
I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-three is approved five oh. And I'm calling for item number twenty-four. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-four is a preliminary plat approval for Tierra Linda subdivision. This is a five acres out of Lot twenty-six dash one West Addition to Sherland subdivision. It's currently zone R One T Townhouse. The developer is Phil Internacional LLC. The engineer is M Garcia Engineering. This property is located thirteen hundred and twenty feet north of Mall Two North Road, along the east side of North Inspiration Road. The developer is proposing thirty-eight townhouse residential lots and one lot for drainage detention pond. City wa, they will have city water and sewer. Staff is recommending approval, subject to compliance with payment and capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
Looking for direction from the council.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve item number twenty-four. Do I hear a second? We have a second. And this is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-four is approved five oh. And I'm calling for item number twenty-five. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-five is a preliminary plat approval. This is for Eduardo subdivision number twenty-four. This is a sixteen point ninety-two acre tract of land out of Lot forty-six dash one West Addition to Sherland. This is in Aurora ETJ. The developer is Las Dianas Land Development and the engineer is Isaguirre Engineering Group LLC. The subject site is located half a mile north of West Mall Six Road. On the east side of Inspiration Road, the developer is proposing sixty-seven single family residential lots. They have Sherland water supply sewer service for this subdivision will be addressed by an internal aiding sewer line system as it ties into an existing aiding San Antonio along the west side of Inspiration Road. City engineer has approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval subject to meeting the model subdivision rules. As, and complying with the street alignment policy and meeting any concerns or comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
Looking for direction from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-five is approved five oh. And I'm calling for item number twenty-six. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor, ma'am.
Item number twenty-six is a preliminary plat approval for Eduardo subdivision number nineteen. This is a twenty-two point zero three acre tract of land out of Lot forty-six dash four and forty-seven dash four West Addition to Sherland. This is in Aurora ETJ. The developer is Isaguirre Real Estate Holdings and the engineer is Isaguirre Engineering Group LLC. This property is located near the northwest corner of West Mall Six and a Half Road and Prosper Road. The developer is proposing eighty-five single family residential lots. They have Sherland water supply sewer service for this subdivision will be addressed by an internal aiding sewer line system as it times to an existing aiding San Antonio sewer line along the west side of Prosper Road. Staff is recommending approval subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy and meeting any comments or concerns from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
There are motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for, for any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-six is approved five oh. And I'm calling for item number twenty-seven. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-seven is a preliminary plat approval for Magnolia Park subdivision. This is a seven point eighty-seven gross acre tract of land out of the south, ten acres of Lot two seventy-two Johnny Sherry subdivision. It's currently zone R One A, which is large lots, single family. The developer is RGB Via Homes LLC and the engineer is B I G Engineering. This property is located half a mile north of East Griffin Parkway, along the west side of Glasscock Road. The developer is proposing twenty-nine large single family residential lots. They will be in compliance with city water and city sewer. The developer is requesting a variance on the lot depth for lots one through six to be one oh four instead of their required one twenty, based on the uniqueness of the land. Staff is recommending approval subject to payment of capital sewer and park fees, provide water district exclusion, compliance with all other format findings, and approval of the variance on the depth. This item is now before you.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is opening for discussion.
I just want to make a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead, ma'am. You have the floor.
So the square feet per lot is, is meets the requirements for the large lots?
It's, yes, ma'am. It's just on the depth. The, the land, the uniqueness of the land does not, does not help them comply with a one twenty, so therefore the need for the variance, but they are meeting the square footage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-seven is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number twenty-eight. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-eight is a final plat approval for Oak Forest subdivision. This is a two This is a two-acre tract out of the north ten acres of the south twenty acres of lot one-eighty-three Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is currently zone R-one-T, which is townhouse. The developer is Black Diamond Developers LLC, and the engineer is M. Garcia Engineering LLC. This property is located along the east side of Glasscock Road, half a mile north of Expressway eighty-three. The developer is proposing twenty-three townhouse residential lots, all exceeding area requirements for an R-one-T lot. They will have city water and sewer. Staff is recommending approval, subject to complying with the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy. They must pay with capital sewer and park fees. They must pay street wiring fees, and the lots currently in a flood zone must be removed from a flood zone prior to final plat approval requirement. This item is now before you.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is open for discussion. No discussion there. Or I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight is approved five-o. And calling for item number twenty-nine. Mr. Balmadas, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Item number twenty-nine, authorization to execute agreement with JVA Consulting Engineers Inc., BPA NV5 Consultants, or third-party engineering support during energy savings performance contracts, ESPC, construction and performance phases. NV5 will be applying engineering economic analysis, reviews, and inspections during project design and construction phases. NV5 will also apply operations and maintenance strategy and will assist in project acceptance and periodic measurement and verification of energy savings. Proposed cost for services is forty-one thousand as per the attached proposal from NV5. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Direction from the council.
This is the... This would support us, the city, in field verification of the cost savings for the energy savings contract that we have with PSI.
This contract is for...
It's for the duration of the construction.
Which is estimated.
About a year and a half, few years.
Mr. Balmadas, we don't have anybody on staff. Maybe the... Our future staff member for our engineering department to oversee this?
We are currently working with them right now to oversee the initial phase of the project, but there's going to be a lot of construction, a lot of field verification of the energy savings and the infrastructure that's going to go into our city system. So I have Chris helping. He's the vice president of NV5. He can answer any questions that you might have in regards to the performance of the services that they are proposing for the city.
Sir, this government was not even looking at the whole thing.
No, this is separate. This is independent from PSI. This is to benefit us and to apply checks and balances for us, for the city, to ensure that the cost savings is guaranteed.
But isn't Mr. Fugino, he didn't?
Yes, yes.
I'm not in that.
Not in this realm of scope, which is verification of energy savings.
And can we use, instead of doing the consultant, can we use at least this money to train our staff? Because the... You know, the smart meters are going to be here for life.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to... We're going to need to have people on staff.
To the discretion of the council, what directive you want to give me? Again, this is just to try to assist us and support us in rendering the service that we need.
Mayor, I move for you now, but I'd also like to, Mr. Betis, for us to have a workshop to discuss this further, so that we could see why is that staff is making this forty-one thousand request for it? And maybe we can have our staff take a look at that.
And if I may...
We have a motion on the floor. This is... I have to have a second.
Second.
We have a second on it. Now we can have discussion. You have the floor.
Yes, sir. This is... If you all recall, this was the same firm that is a third-party engineer that did the analysis on the investment grade audit. We do have contingency funds within the contract that could be utilized for this. Now, training is part of the contract with PSI to train our staff, because we are having new software and then also with the services of the meters. So, training is part of the contract already for PSI to train our staff. And this one... This firm is independent individually to check field verification of the products that are being installed out there in the field. That's why this is being presented.
Help, is it appropriate for me to add any comment at this time?
Excuse me, sir. You're not recognized by the chair. I have a council member speaking at this time. If you would hold your comments, please.
What? Are they the only ones that submitted a bit?
They were the initial firm that submitted a proposal for the third-party engineering review that's required by local government code.
So we didn't ask for this?
No.
Or request for qualification?
This would be part of that initial proposal that was presented to us.
But are they the same firm that came to do the presentation?
No. This is the same firm that was present and gave a presentation and the recommendation of the findings for the energy savings.
I will wait.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let's have a workshop to discuss what we're at and what's the feeling of everybody and what the next step is.
Is that okay?
And go over proposals, if possible.
Are you okay with that? Let's have the workshop and see what direction we can go from there.
Mayor, are you asking me something?
Yes, ma'am. If it's okay for us to call a workshop on this issue and see what direction the council wants to move on it, and so we can give guidance to staff on how we want to move forward with this.
Okay, so would the... Would the appropriate action be no action or...
Right now, I have a motion and a second to deny item number twenty-nine at this time.
But we're going to review the item at a workshop?
We are going to... Yes, at the request of one, two council members. And that's what I was asking you for consensus, to see if you were the third one and Mr. Vela the fourth. Yeah, Mr. Vela concurs, so...
Okay.
So... This is... I want to ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. It is denied. Item number twenty-nine, five-zero. For the record, but we're directing the city manager to set up a item of the workshop. And the item of the workshop is to have staff present to the council why this was brought up and what's the reason for it and what is the direction that the staff is asking for. Am I correct, Ms. Ortega?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm going to call now for item number thirty. I was wondering why you hadn't moved, I said. Mr. Balmadas, you have the floor, sir.
Item number thirty, Mayor, Council seeking authorization to purchase an air curtain burner or air curtain incinerator from Air Burner Inc. The sanitation department seeking authorization to purchase an S-three-thirty tier-four final air curtain burner for the high-temperature burning of land, clearing debris, green waste, storm debris, and other waste streams in compliance with the requirements of U.S. EPA forty CFR sixteen. The air burner will be shipped from that factory completely assembled, ready for immediate use, and does not require disassembly for relocation. The air curtain burner will assist the department in downsizing the volume of brush and debris hauled to landfill for cost savings in operation. Purchase will be done via GSA Air Burner Tank Contract four-seven-QMCA twenty-D-zero-zero-C and four-seven-QMCA twenty-D-zero-zero-B for a total cost of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-two-seventeen-point-fifty-three to include the air curtain burner and two-day onsite operator training certification. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I definitely approve.
And we definitely accept your motion and second. And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty is approved five-o.
Thank you, Mr. Balmadas.
And calling for item number thirty-one. Mr. Mendiola, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Authorization to purchase three grapple units from Freightliner Boston via TIPS Contract two-hundred-two-oh-six. Additional grapple units will assist the sanitation department to keep up with the regular pickup schedule and the economic growth of the city. Equipment will also allow the sanitation department to implement the necessary rented of maintenance and repair of our older units to maximize their lifespan. Grapple units will serve as frontline emergency response to our yearly unexpected catastrophe, weather events such as hurricanes, floods, and freezes. The estimated delivery time of the first unit will be July twenty-one. The other two units will be units scheduled for delivery of December twenty-one. The total cost of three units is four-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion on the board to approve item number thirty-one. Do I hear a second? We have a second. And this is open for discussion.
Mr. Mendiola?
Yes.
Thank you so much for this. You know that this is a phone call that all of us have gotten, and I do understand that your department is working tirelessly to try to get our city clean. My question is, is there any way that we can work with this company? I mean, Mr. Balmadas can also help you with this question. Getting it any sooner from the December one or July?
We've tried. We've talked to different vendors to see what would be the best option for us to deliver it. This was the best one that we had. The other options that we had was to wait till twenty-twenty-two March. So this was our best venue right now to meet our criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balmadas, for your assistance also. I know you've been working with him diligently and... The Fed is also... I know that you have been working diligently on this project. You know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The item thirty-one is approved five-o. Mr. Mendiola?
Thank you.
And I'm calling up for item number thirty-two. And then grant administrator, please come up and present us with it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-two is seeking authorization to accept the grant award of the twenty-twenty Operation Stone Garden Program Grant from the Office of the Governor. The grant will allow the mission police officers the opportunity to work overtime through increased patrol presence throughout the city of Mission and especially around the U.S.-Mexico border. The grant will further allow the department to purchase three fully-equipped Chevy Tahoe units for its operations. The total amount of the grant awarded is three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand and does not require a city map. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. It's actually recognized. And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-two is approved five-o. And calling for item number thirty-three. And Chief Sanchez, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item thirty-three, authorization to purchase operational equipment from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialists, Inc. via Buy Board Contract six-zero-three-dash-two-zero. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase power air purifying respirators with accessories from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialists, Inc. via Texas Buy Board Contract six-zero-three-dash-two-zero. The grant amount is eighty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-and-ninety-one cents with a ten percent cost share match of eight-thousand-thirty-four dollars and nine cents, where a total grant amount of eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. A price increase of four-hundred-and... Four-hundred-and-twenty dollars from the original quotation, which brings the total amount of purchase of eighty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? You have a second. And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-three. Chief Sanchez is approved five-o. And calling for item number thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, approval of the Mission Fire Department's standard operating procedures. The Mission Fire Department's standing operating procedures were reviewed and revised as per the recommendations made by the Fire Farming Collaborative Committee. SOPs will be effective May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, at eight a.m. Eight a.m. in the morning. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, move for approval of the Mission Fire Department's standard operating procedures as presented and discussed in...
Before I recognize you, I want to recognize our city attorney.
Yes.
For guidance on how the motion should reach it.
Motion should read to accept and ratify, Mayor. Approval of this will come from the Mission Fire.
Thank you.
I move to accept and ratify the Mission Fire Department's standard operating procedures.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vela, second. And this is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-four is approved five-o. And we accept them and we ratify them for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I'm moving over to item number thirty-six. And item number thirty-five has already been addressed. And Ms. Vela, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-six is the approval of the March twenty-twenty-one tax collection report. The total twenty-twenty tax levy was twenty-four-million-three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. And amount of collections as of March thirty-first is twenty-two-million-seven-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents, which represents ninety-three-point-seventy-seven percent of the twenty-twenty tax levy. The total delinquent tax levy is two-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and thirty-six cents. And amount of collections as of March thirty-first was three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents, which represents fifteen-point-thirty-six percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-six is approved four-zero. And calling for item number thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven is the approval of the March twenty-twenty-one financial statement. We have total revenues for the month of March of nine-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and total expenditures of twelve-million-six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, leaving an ending adjusting fund balance of fifteen-million-six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-seven is approved four-zero. And then calling for item number thirty-eight. Ms. Vela, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-eight is approval of the attached budget amendments in the General Fund, Utility Fund, CDBG Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Municipal Court Technology Fund, the Designated Purpose Fund, and the Twenty-Eighteen Certificate of Obligations Fund. In the General Fund, we have expenditures in the amount of one-hundred-and-five-thousand to allocate funding for a lawsuit settlement related to personnel final payment. In the Utility Fund, we have forty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eight dollars in expenditures to allocate funding for additional staff as recommended for engineering. In the CDBG Fund, we have five-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in revenues and expenditures for the allocation of the Round Three CARES Act coronavirus funding from the U.S. Department of Housing. In the Solid Waste Fund, we have two-hundred-thousand in expenditures to allocate funding for the purchase of the air burner for brush operation. In the Municipal Court Technology Fund, we have a reclassification of fourteen-thousand to cover the maintenance on ticket riders in the current fiscal year. In the Designated Purpose Fund, we have fifty-thousand in revenues and expenditures for the Petco Foundation Grant that will be used for the Health Department for animal services to the community. And finally, in the Two Thousand Eighteen Certificate of Obligations Fund, we have three-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-two dollars in expenditures to allocate funding for approved projects for the remainder of the fiscal year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-eight is approved five-o. And I'm asking for item number thirty-nine. Thank you, Ms. Vela. Item number thirty-nine, Mr. Betis, you have the podium.
Sir, item thirty-nine is...
I want to address it from over there.
Yes, sir. Just because we do have... This is item on discussion possible action on modifying COVID-nineteen city emission guidelines. At this time, we don't have any changes. We have opened our facilities, and we are monitoring them as we need.
How about the rental of the gyms?
Yes, sir. We are expecting to bring it back in the next city council meeting because we are looking at adjusting our rental rates. because we are looking at adjusting our rental rates
Okay.
to be comparable with our neighboring city.
Putting it into an agenda item?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Specific agenda?
Yes, sir.
And any questions by any other council or anything that you all want to modify in the COVID-nineteen guidelines that we have, we have previously set?
No, Mayor, thank you.
I do want to make a point that we still have our emergency operational center activated for COVID-nineteen. Am I correct, Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir, we do have the number active to be able to call you.
Thank you. So no action, no, no, item number thirty-nine, Mr. Martinez, it's, so I'll just call for item number forty.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Belmonte, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor. Item number forty, authorized staff to engage Rike Ogden Vigro Alex Architects, Inc. for project scope, design, and construction documents of Veterans Project. Staff seeking authorization to exit contract with a firm for project scope, design, construction documents for Veterans Project in accordance with the Texas Professional Services Experiment Act, government code section two-two-five-four point two-zero-one. And according with this code, contract for professional services of architect, engineer, or surveyor at fair reasonable fixed percentage rate of seven percent of total construction cost is being proposed by the firm. Veterans Project will be located on the ten-acre tracal land donated by Rhodes Enterprises. Veterans Committee approved the recommendation of the architect on Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one. This architect is part of the pool for the city of Mission.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Belmonte, so we've already acquired the land, and it's already donated to the city of Mission?
The land has, we've been communicated by Rhodes Enterprises, the land will be donated to us. I believe our, our legal counsel is currently looking at that.
It was approved in October of last year, six months ago. Their lawyers got the deed, and the land had to be partitioned out. So I spoke to Matt Rhodes, Matt Jones, this morning, and he said it had to be but yes, it's been approved to be transferred over to us. It's just working on the case.
Yes, and it's already been surveyed already. So we already have the mix and balance.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I didn't hear Mr. Martinez very well. I did hear that something was approved in October. What, what was approved?
I'll ask him to repeat, ma'am, so he can clearly, he can hear it directly, ma'am.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in October of last year, according to our minutes, and I remember the meeting, there was an item to approve a donation from Rhodes to the city of Mission of ten acres. Those ten acres had not yet at that time been partitioned, but they were identified through a survey. Their attorney is Matt Jones, and Jones Galligan. I haven't spoken to him. He's preparing a gift deed or another type of warranty deed or transfer deed, which we'll have later this week.
Okay, I, I just wanted to be sure that we had had an item on our agenda that accepted the donation.
And then my second question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Belmonte, how much is it going to cost for this architect? And where are we going to be getting the, I guess this question would be for finance or for Mr. Perez? What would be getting the budget for this line item?
This is very preliminary. They still have to do additional studies of the land and meet with the committee and board, the mayor, to determine a scope of work.
And I also want to add that this, this scope of work is very preliminary for just conceptualization and schematic, so we can be able to, to file for grants. For grants with the Veterans, Veterans Commission, we've already talked to the Texas Land, General Land Office, and they, they were, they have grants available for, for projects like this. And not only, Henry Quayle has also mentioned that the Veterans Administration also has federal funds for, for that deal, but we cannot apply, we don't have a conceptualization plan.
Well, without due respect, I mean, it's just, I have questions.
No problem.
I just, I just don't like awarding anything without actually having a physical number. And I don't like orders to come back and say, oh, well, we're adding so-and-so. So then you weren't really the lowest bid. But on this particular item, I would like a cost of how much it's going to cost for this project. That's what I, I would feel more comfortable going that route.
Until we determine how much we are going to be investing into the ten-acre construction complex and how much we're going to be applying for, for grants, the actual, the actual cost would, would be, I think what we need to direct to Mr. Belmonte is, is how much, how much the architect is going to charge it for the conceptualization part, and then the, the rest we can bring back to the council.
Well, but that's what should have probably been here right now. We should have already talked to them, no? Or we approved today, and then you all talk to them and then bring it back?
Yes.
You, you can make it subject to, ma'am.
So this is just engaging with them to see the costs?
I need authorization from council and mayor to engage them. And it can be subject to approval as well.
Okay, so let me get, I guess I have another question now. So we have a list of architects that have met, you all went through and made sure that they have all the insurances and all that to be, to do work in the city. Who, why was this one?
Let me explain to you how the process was. The Veterans Committee appointed a subcommittee to work on this project. And the subcommittee, because I attended the subcommittee meeting, and I, and my, my preference was that, for them not to engage with architects that are already engaged with projects with us. So, so that left, you know, and, and so that kind of, kind of self-eliminated certain architects because they already engaged with the, with the fire department, with the fire station, with the Lions Park and so forth, because we want for the architects to be on top of, of the project. And that's where, and that's why Rick, and, and, and if you want to, if you're thinking, looking at the qualification, they're the ones also that, that, when, they're, they're the ones that built the station number three. They were the architects of station number three, so that's part of the quality of work that they do.
I guess for me, because this is going to be such a big project for veterans, I would like to see our queues and for us to go out for bids, so that, that a person, an architect firm with this type of expertise on a veteran's wall be brought forth. Because here we're choosing, yeah, I don't know what this firm has in experience with a veteran wall.
But once we get the conceptualization plan, we can come back and do what you're asking for. You know, but right now, the, 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 the timing has to do with, we need to get the conceptualization plan to, to be, to be developed by, by an architect, so we can be able to meet the deadlines for the grants. If not, you know, by the time we go, we do what, what you're asking for and go back, because, see, they were, they were chosen from a list that us, the council has already qualified them. We have already got, we've already asked for, for the qualifications, and the qualifications have already been met and certified, and, and, and they will come to us already, so we already have them on, on that list. And the intent of that list was to avoid time in case we need to, 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 to come up and work on.
So how long will it take, Mr. Belmonte, if we don't go with this, to go out for our queues and see if there's anybody else out there that knows about veterans' wall?
Approximately between thirty and sixty days, ma'am. I would have to pretty much develop. Yeah.
Thirty days would be pretty much.
Yeah, sixty, sixty, normally it takes.
We have to come back with an agenda item, and the next city council meeting is about two weeks from now.
But this is a future project.
To authorize the, the, the qualification for, because she's asking for specific qualification.
And then that's what I meant that
This is a proposed future project. I mean, we have, we were able to get this like super top-notch. I mean, we want to be the envy of all other municipalities in the Rio Grande Valley, and I feel we should dedicate time and effort to make it perfect.
Mayor, I have a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead. Wait, let me finish with this, then I'll, I'll, I'll call for you. We need all, to answer all the questions. Go ahead, Ms. Perez.
I would just like to add something.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so instead of requesting qualifications, maybe what we should do is request for proposals. And instead of the qualifications, because we know that they basically qualify. But they, they may, if we're asking for proposals, they may bring in some other information that we don't have. Like Jessica's basically saying, maybe they have experience in doing what we're trying to get done as well.
Yes, but I, I think that we would not, correctly, Martinez, I don't know, can, can we convert this to a request for proposals? But that's not what's on the agenda.
That's
To authorize.
Yeah.
You're asking No action, and then come back in two weeks.
I would deny or take no action, and then draft a new agenda item requesting either proposals or qualifications.
And by that time, Mayor, we will have a letter from Mr. Rhodes that he's donating the land officially.
Or the document.
We will have, we will have the deed.
Yeah.
But we won't make the deadline for grants. But that's okay. We will wait for the next cycle.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the next button.
No, well, that's, that's another question that I asked for Randy. I didn't get the answer because I haven't let him speak yet. But where are we going to get the money for, to pay for all this?
Yeah, no, so right now, we don't have, other than what they're proposing, they're proposing to charge seven percent of the total cost of the construction. Now, at this time, we don't have a, any type of estimate of, of, of cost. At that point, we would come back with a budget amendment because it's not a budgeted item at this time.
Okay. I move that we table?
No action.
No action.
We, we just take no action, and then, and then if that's the consensus of the, of the rest of the council, I don't know of the rest of the council. You know, so I can advise the chairman, Mr. Reyna. I can advise Mr. Reyna, the chairman, that, that, that the, the item was, was no action. Counsel, individually? What do you want, no action? No action?
No action.
No action? Is that said, no action?
No action.
Okay, for the record, I'm against the no action, you know, for, because of the that I want action. So, you know, but, and the reason why, you know, our grant writer over there is, is going to be waiting for, for another two weeks, which is okay, you know, that's what the council wishes to are.
Mayor, without due respect, I think we all have, we all want action too because I think the veterans' moral wall is something that's going to be very instrumental for our city to be known for. But I just think it's a process that we all need to dot our i's and cross our t's, and this is part of it.
Yes, which we already
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
In the meantime, I'll, I'll work with our engineers to try to develop what's called for that.
Yes, okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know, I don't see it, but I would appreciate it. I'm sure you'll, you'll
I'll let her know.
You'll come on board.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number forty-one, unfinished business, the, the council wished to untable. If so, I need a motion.
I move to one table?
We have a motion on the floor to one table. Hold on, ma'am. Wait, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, get same sign. Motion carries, five oh, it's untabled, and now item number forty-one. You have the floor, ma'am. You, you, now you can come to the podium. Now we have the agenda on the, on the, on the table. Go ahead.
No say English. Buenas tardes para todos.
I'll have to
Hola, muchas gracias. Este, no sé si el procedimiento, pero no sé si pueda repartirles.
Is Deluna, you can join in anytime, okay?
Okay.
Do you want me to present the item?
I think she presents the item, and she's asking.
Let me, let me, let me present the item first.
And she's presenting, she's presenting already a handout. Let's see what the handout says for
Hola, gracias por venir. Teníamos muchas preguntas. Muchas gracias.
I need to give her the Is Deluna, go ahead.
Item forty-one is a rezoning for lots thirty-one and thirty-two, block one, town of Madero. It's currently agricultural. She's wanting to rezone to R-two, which is duplex orplex. The applicant is Laura Abrusolo. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance, we'll be needed. This property is located on the northwest corner of Bohan Villa and Peña Street. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast, west, and south. Existing land uses include residential to all sites. It's currently low density. This property was annexed to the city in March nine nineteen ninety-eight as agricultural. The applicant desires an R-two, which is a duplex orplex. PNC and staff are recommending denial. Approving it would be considered spotzoni. The applicant, it is proposing two eight-hundred-square-foot apartments with three bedrooms each. We included the site plan in your packet as well as our proposal. If, if she builds two homes within the two lots, she could build a bigger home on, on, on each lot, which are the ones you're seeing in your exhibit. PNC and staff recommended denial. This item is now before you.
Okay, ahora sí puede hablar. Okay, mi nombre es Laura Bruzolo. Buenas tardes para todos. Este, yo vivo actualmente con mi hermana. Tengo tres años de divorciada. Mi hermana tiene diez años de divorciada. Mis hijos ya son mayores, no viven conmigo. Los hijos de mi hermana están pequeñas aún. Nosotros compartimos gastos y nosotros no tenemos casa propia, ¿verdad? Se nos presentó la oportunidad de comprar este terreno. Es un, es un terreno chico. Este, como pueden ver en las fotos, estoy diciendo dónde están las primeras dos fotos donde están este ubicado el terreno. Está el sur, la Conway. Y la segunda foto tiene cinco marquitas azules, que son las fotos siguientes de las cinco casas que van a rodear este, pues el terreno donde pienso construir, ¿verdad? Este, la última foto pues es mi familia, mi familia actual, ¿verdad? Entonces nosotros simplemente queremos seguir viviendo juntas. Mi hermana es bond driver, y yo soy boogie king, de un taller mecánico. No tenemos ingresos altos. La colonia es una colonia media baja, ¿verdad?, de ingresos. Nos gusta este, este terreno porque está cerca del backside, y las cuatro montamos bicicleta. Tenemos fácil acceso al spreadway, y ahorita trabajo en la feria. Y este, y pues nos parece, nos gusta esa localización, ¿verdad? Entonces, este es el proyecto que nosotros estamos tratando de hacer para que cada una de nosotros podamos tener nuestra privacidad. Yo sé que pues nuestro primera meta era decir, bueno, la mayoría son casas, mobile drive, mobile homes. Entonces nosotros pensábamos comprar una mobile home double y meterla al terreno. Y pues como quiera, cada quien iba a tener su privacidad, pero nos dimos cuenta que eso no se podía. Entonces nos dijeron que teníamos que construir. Entonces nos dimos a la tarea de buscar una arquitecto, y empezamos a tomar presupuestos para que nos hiciera un proyecto, un proyecto de algo bonito, económico, o sea, y que pudiéramos vivir las dos cómodas, ¿verdad?, y juntos. Este, después, ya cuando fui al banco, me aprobaron para poder construir, pero después cuando vine a pedir aquí el permiso, me dijeron que necesitábamos unos formas especiales que para huracanes, aire acondicionado, no sé qué. Entonces conseguimos un ingeniero, nos hicieron los préstamos, los planos especiales de esos, y después ya conseguimos un constructor que nos dio un presupuesto para poder meter al banco. Pero cuando vine para acá, yo no sabía que no estaba permitido hacer un duplex, ¿verdad? Entonces nos dieron esa opción de, que nos dan cinco pies más para poder nosotros hacer, pues dos casitas, pero no sería nada ergonómico. Serían como dos pequeños choricitos. Por qué? Porque los terrenos son demasiado angustiosos. Cada terreno nos quedaría veinticinco por cien. Entonces este sería un pequeño choricito, o sea, no es como el plano que les estoy mostrando. Es un plano de ochocientos pies cuadrados cada uno. Son mil seiscientos el total. Este, cada departamento tendría tres recamaras, una recámara principal con su baño, y dos recamaras pequeñas con otro baño, y la salita comedor con la cocina. En la parte de enfrente tiene espacio cada uno para dos caras. Este, y pues yo sé que planning no está de acuerdo porque dice que va en contra de, de las reglas, pero este, yo sé que el concilio puede autorizar. Yo los dejo a consideración de ustedes, y este, yo me voy a acatar a lo que ustedes.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
I hear from the council.
I know this will create a spot zoning in the area that you already have nine distant places that have an updated law. Uh, I think the area needs a lot of improvements, so I just wanna make sure that it's approved, that it's follow, uh, follow the, the requirement of landscaping, trees. Uh, I think it's better for us to have that.
Are you putting in formal motion, Mr. Plata? Do we hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Uh, any discussion by any of the other councils? I do wanna let you know that we need four fifths or five fifths to, to, to pass this. You, uh, any discussion? Call for a vote and then I have to, I have to call individually because it's a, it's one of, one of those, uh, four fifths and five fifths, so I'll call it, Mr. Portero, how you vote?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Then Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Plata?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes also, so this item passes, the five oh, for, uh, item number forty-one. And I'm moving over to routine matters and, and I'm, uh, I wanna get the city manager's comments. Mr. City Manager, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Um, I do wanna mention that, uh, this past weekend, we did have a tire recycling, um, event that went, uh, was very, very successful. I, I do wanna thank staff for, for their hard work. Uh, we collected, um, over three hundred tires in a couple hours that we were, uh, there at the site. Uh, we will be, um, as staff, we will be continuing to, uh, do as a routine to pick up tires throughout our city on a periodically basis through, uh, our maintenance, uh, uh, schedule. So I do wanna thank staff for, for their hard work this weekend. Uh, we, we did pass out promotional items on our recycling as well, so that is something that, uh, we're, we're continuing working on. Also, uh, I do wanna, uh, recommend, sir, we, we, we talked about those items that were tabled. Uh, I did, uh, in, in talking to staff, uh, we have been planning to do a joint, a joint workshop with the, uh, planning and zoning. Um, my recommendation, if everyone is okay, uh, we did check with planning and zoning. They are available May the twentieth. Uh, that would be a Thursday afternoon at four P M. Uh, that is a, uh, we, we do have, uh, also some ordinances that we would like to, uh, propose on, put, uh, possibly changing and amending, uh, some ordinances. So that will be in conjunction to, uh, the rezoning, uh, discussion of Meadow Creek. So that is a proposal that I would like to, um, uh, to propose to the council. Uh, so that way we can, uh, schedule it for May the twentieth, which is a Thursday at four P M.
Okay, is that all, Mr. Veda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Mayor had to step away, so my only comment is to remind everybody that our Texas interest yesterday is going to be the Saturday. So I welcome everybody to, to attend and watch us beyond our beautiful float. I'm sure Parks and Rec is doing an excellent job once again. Um, and then the fun fair and then the vaquero coca. Um, and Ms. Garza, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Plata? Mr. Veda?
No comment.
Okay, I'll have the whole. Are we ready to go into executive session pursuant to V T C A government code section five five one point zero zero one? I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second? All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we can go into executive session. Thank you.
Well, you think I'm.
I don't think it's a manny. Wow, sir. How do you? How about me? Why is it a one? Or is it a two?
Second.
We have a motion, the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Garza, you're on?
Yes.
Five oh. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Call for executive session number forty two. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Item number forty two requires a motion to deny request as discussed in the executive session.
Okay, do I hear a motion to deny the request?
I make a motion to deny the request as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty two passes five zero and call for item number forty three.
Yes, mayor. Forty three A is a tax resale bid. It requires a motion to accept bid as discussed in executive session for the property tax bid on lot thirty one, Melba Cartel submission.
And also approve resolution number seventeen thirty two.
Yes, sir.
Some move, mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty three with resolution seventeen thirty two is approved five oh and I'm calling for forty three B.
Yes, sir. Item forty three B, mayor, requires a motion to accept counter offer as discussed in executive session.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty three B is approved five zero and I will entertain a term.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor. May I be few?
Excuse me.
Good night, everybody.